The elementary's part of the intercom communication systems. Having done and we're using our security funding for. And I think they're pretty close to getting done over there. And then over here, and hopefully we will have that completely done here in the next few weeks. And like I said, that's we're using our security funding for that this year. Next year, we've got some items that we're still discussing, but we'll get to those later. Other than that, we don't really have anything out of the ordinary. Like I said, there's several little things on there, just some little items. Out of the ordinary, there is one down there at the bottom for four thousand eight seventy-seven twenty-eight. And that five fifty-nine, that is our after-school program. Our after-school supplies. And so there'll be some of those that we utilize for some different things aboard and off for next year also. Building fund, we just literally just had one expense there for a hundred and ten dollars for special cable line. We will have some other expenses out of the building done before the end of the year. That we're gonna have to take care of, we've had some plumbing issues on the house across the street. That need to be fixed. And so we're gonna address those. And then we're also gonna be putting in some carpet into the classrooms down here that don't have carpet or have had carpet. We'll be putting carpet in one of the classrooms this summer. So it'll look almost identical to what we have here in the library. So that'll be nice time to get those two rooms taken care of down there. Child nutrition. Nothing really out of the ordinary there. We did finish out the year. And we had another, you know, a nice donation given to us again to help cover the cost. And so what we did is we took that and we dispersed that evenly amongst all students in their accounts. Which for some, you know, may have helped quite a bit, they had a small lunch bill. They made payments throughout the year, it was a little bit smaller, but without a donation coming in specific for one student. You know, the only way to do that clearly is to distribute it evenly. And so that's how we did that, so there still was several accounts that had a balance left on it. Once some of them were applied, they went through. Some may have got a little bit of a refund back if they've overpaid. And some still have accounts that they still owe money. And those will stay on there and they'll have to start next year with that. But we're gonna have to work pretty hard to try to get everybody to pay on a timely fashion. So that's the way to put that, next year. And so each month, we'll be sending out statements and getting a hold of that a little bit better. And hopefully we won't have to take it too far, too much further down the line than that. But that's something that we'll have to work on. But we did finish that out for the child nutrition fund for this year. On item E there, the activity fund report. And then under that, transfer of funds from the class of twenty twenty-two account in the amount of eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents to the beautification account. The class of twenty-two has no more financial responsibilities to fulfill, so that money sits there for two years. And nothing's really done with that, and that beautification fund is the one that is used, and that's usually where that money goes to. And then if there's a need for something around school, smaller, we can use that, that money for that. So we usually do this about every year, but it's two years later. So if we would like to transfer those funds to the beautification fund. And then treasurer's report. Amanda, is there anything you want? Specifically? I'll just take a little bit of time and go through those. So like I said, I'm sure, I'm looking at the summary of the financial activities. It looks like this picture out here kinda shows all our accounts. And our funds. The general fund on this, and this is as of, it says May first. Thirty-first?
Yeah. I don't know why it's.
So it's May thirty-first. So again, it's. General fund at the end of May, you know, pretty healthy there with two point one million. You know, we have quite a bit of expenses there at the end, so I still think with the expenses that we have remaining. And then depending on whether or not we get some of our federal claims back before June thirtieth or after June thirtieth. That carryover amount is gonna, could be anywhere from one point two to close to one point four, just like with last year. Depending on if we get some of that back. With that being, some of the ESER funds, I know we won't get, like for our summer school teachers, and those are just probably not, it's not gonna get turned around in a day. So carryover might look a little bit lower, but then we can get that money back within two weeks after that, so. But all in all, I think our general fund is still in really good shape, considering we brought in six hundred thousand dollars or less in gross production this year than we did last year. And we knew that that was gonna be significantly lower. I thought I was being pretty conservative, projecting it at sixty percent, and it turned out to be fifty percent. So it was lower than what I thought. But our carryover is still gonna be in a very good position, so that if that continues. Of course, programs that are tied to federal funding, that federal funding is going away. Those programs and expenses will have to go away with it. We're still evaluating some things that are being used with federal dollars to see if we can continue. Our LTC counselors being one of those things that we're looking at, how we can make that still happen. May not be exactly the same amount of time as they're here, but something. But all in all, our accounts are gonna be, I think, healthy where they need to be. But we're still gonna have to be, you know, pretty aware of what's going on, we still have some unforeseen things that will always come up. And then just, everything's getting more expensive. So, you know, our insurance and all those other things continue to go up, I'll talk about that when we get to it on the agenda. Didn't go up as much, so that's a good thing. But just our textbooks, everything that we're trying to keep up with, everything's getting more expensive, so. But we're still, like I said, I feel like we're in a pretty good position. And so as far as our statement of accounts there, treasurer's report, go pretty good about it. Any questions? I'll go through that fairly fast.
Questions? I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve a consent agenda item eighty-three.
Second.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
I said eighty-three, I didn't say eight or a.
Well, I wrote down that. I didn't mean it.
You wrote my one.
Three principals report.
Just a few things, our last board meeting, I hadn't had this information yet, of our chief track team received a distinguished academic plaque. This award is given to teams with a minimum cumulative grade point average of three point five and ranked an above ten percent of your classification. So both track teams did very well academically this year. I told you last month I would have an update on state FFA convention. Davin Booty was one of four in the state selected as an FFA foundation leadership intern for the state convention. State champion proficiency winner in environmental science and natural resource management. Haley Jantsch was one of one hundred members selected for the state FFA course. State champion proficiency winner in dairy production entrepreneurship. Joel Parker was state runner-up in diversified crop production placement proficiency. Madeline Smallwood was a receiver of state FFA degree, seven hundred thirteen total in the state of Oklahoma. Career passport in agricultural communications. Chapter was also recognized as a hundred challenged participant and FFA foundation contributor. Eighteen total students from Cherokee attended state FFA convention. And on Thursday morning, members volunteered at the regional food bank in Tulsa labeling and boxing over six thousand pounds of canned corn. One thing I left off last month, Mrs. Tucker had her sixth and seventh grade class compete in a full-year stock market game. The stock market games are sponsored by the Oklahoma Council of Economics. The team of Creed Patterson, Alyssa Flader, Kendall Collins, Aubrey Hughes, Brooke Candel placed second for the fourth through eighth grade division for the state. They ended the game with a hundred twenty thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Each team starts off with a hundred thousand to invest in stocks, and they must invest in at least three different companies throughout the competition, so. They just did it for fun and ended up doing really well. Summer camps are in full swing, I know football, went to Okieen team camp. We host our elementary little kid camp the first week the school is out. We've had junior high girls' basketball camp, junior high boys' basketball camp, and both basketball teams left today to go to their respective first camp of the summer. Our seniors were awarded over three hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money this year. I can't remember the exact amount, but I know it was over three hundred thousand, so that was really, for a small class, very small class, that's a lot of money. One thing, we're switching to a new student information system. And so I know we've posted several times to pre-enroll your, our current students. I think our elementary's doing well from what I've heard, our sixth through twelve, though, maybe not so good. So we need to parents of current students to please request a login and pre-enroll their students for next year. The biggest thing, the biggest hard thing I think on that is you have to have a picture of your birth certificate. That's required by the state, we have to provide a place of birth and tell them how we know that, so birth certificate's the one. And you have to, it's really easy to upload if you do it on your phone, do them a picture of it. So, but please get your login, get your students pre-enrolled for next year. And then last but not least, there are five students attending the FCC LA National Leadership Convention in Seattle this summer. They leave June twenty-eighth and will be back July fourth.
Mrs. Patterson's not feeling well, so she sent me her report here. Pretty short, summer school started last week, they have sixty-eight students enrolled. And it's off to a great start. They also received a third grade region preliminary scores, and she was very, very pleased with those results and just wants to pass along what a great job the students and the teachers did to make that happen. That's it for hers.
Move on to number four, discussion on possible board acting appoint superintendent Shawn Barker as the agent to ensure compliance of, for the AHERA programs, purchasing agent caring and also officer of the locational programs. Complaints and civil rights complaints, risk manager of the OSAHA programs, of the official representative of enacting for the board. In connection with applying for any federal, state, and local funds such as ERAD title one, two, four, five, six, seven, and any grants other than the programs on the BIDF, sure to keep up with schools for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So all that to say, just allows me to sign off on all of our federal claims and programs, anything that we need to either apply for, reimbursement, or a grant opportunity. Just something we do each year. Allow me to sign off on those things.
I'll make a motion to, to appoint superintendent Shawn Barker as the agent.
I'll second.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Number six. Discussion about to approve, to approve or not to approve annual. Sorry, did I? Okay, number five, I already marked it off. Sorry.
Where'd you jump right?
No, no, that's my, my whole. Discussion about to approve or not approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five membership of the district with OSIG. Workman's golf, nineteen thousand five eighty-seven, and district membership of OSIG. And the insurance.
Okay, so OSIG, workman's golf insurance, every year, something we do. And like I said, that quote is listed there as for nineteen thousand five eighty-seven. That's pretty straightforward. What that is, we don't have a whole lot of options when it comes to either of these. So our property insurance with OSIG, that premium this year is going to be a hundred forty-one thousand. And there's a hundred forty-one thousand and some change, or three hundred and twelve dollars. That's up, last year our premium was a hundred thirty thousand, six twenty-four. So, you know, right about eleven thousand dollars increase. That's a better increase than from previous years. The last two years, it had jumped up almost thirty thousand a year. So as building costs continue to rise, so are insurance premiums, but this year, fortunately, it wasn't as much of an increase as years past. Again, we don't have a lot of options when it comes to property insurance. OSIG is pretty much our only choice there to deal with. As most other schools or all other schools in the state are also based with that too. Not that they do a bad job, but there's just not a lot of options out there for that. So I recommend that we again approve both of those memberships.
I'll make a motion that we approve both of OSIG and OSIG.
Can I ask a question real quick? Sorry, did the workman's golf one got too far?
You know, I look back, I couldn't find the number from last year, I don't know.
I think it was seventeen something last year.
Yeah, a couple thousand. No, you're fine.
How are you? Okay, I'll second.
Poe?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Okay, now, item number six. Discussion about to approve or not to approve the annual contract with precision testing, precision testing laboratories for the district. Bestas payment service in the amount of one thousand dollars.
This has not increased, that's usually what it is every year, for them to come out and check, I believe, in the north end. Just look in those parameters, I guess, of the testing that's required there for bestas. So I would recommend that we approve that again.
I'll make a motion to approve the precision testing law. I'll second.
Poe?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Number seven. Those are the executive session to discuss the personnel to include salaries contracts for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll make a motion. To convene in to executive session.
And I'll second.
Poe?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson? Fine.
Okay, seven, indeed, return the open session, correct?
Make a motion to return the open session.
Second.
Poe?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
In executive session, we discuss personnel to include salaries and contracts for the school year twenty-two, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five pursuant to twenty-five OS. Three oh seven V one.
Take the second statement. Need what? So where are we at?
Number eight.
Number, it's the, okay, discussion about to approve employment of Bestmet as kindergarten teacher. And do I need to split this up?
We can do, together, or we can do separate, however the motion, okay, either one is fine.
So I'm gonna go ahead and continue with Bestmet kindergarten teacher and Crystal Doyle Elementary, paraprod for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Make a motion if we approve employment of both individuals listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Which one of you was that?
You make the motion, I second.
Yeah, okay, I can, sorry. Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion about to approve or not approve the temporary appropriations for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented from Charles, Amyna Carroll.
Temporary appropriations, just allow us to encumber and start making purchases for the next fiscal year until we can get our estimate of needs in, it will be, well, that will set our final budget amounts. And those temporary appropriations are just made in the general fund, building fund, child nutrition funds. The amount for the general fund is five million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars. Building fund will be three hundred forty-nine thousand, three fifteen, and the child nutrition fund of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine eighty-eight. Those amounts will most likely change and look a little bit different on the estimate of needs. They're usually a little bit lower on the temporary appropriations, but it gets it started for the next fiscal year. So I recommend we approve this today.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary appropriations for the school year twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
And discussion about to approve or not approve the lease agreement with American Tower LLC.
Poe, American Tower is the company that we deal with when it comes to leasing the tower site, it's over here by the bus horn. It doesn't take up a lot of space, but right now, we receive about five hundred dollars a month rent. And so that will go up just a little bit with this new agreement. There's also the possibility, it's pending approval, I'm not sure exactly what exactly has to be approved there, but we could give a signing bonus of sixty-five hundred dollars to extend this. They are asking that we extend the term of the lease with the addition of seven added five-year term options. So we will have the option to, I guess, to get out of it every five years with them. And then there is an aggregator, specific right of first refusal, that would only pertain to the sale of the lease itself if someone in the business of buying or selling leases comes along. They have that first option to rebuttal that or make this another offer. So, you know, right now, I sit out, the towers are probably not anywhere. This is just a continuation, but a little bit of a bump. There's also a ten percent increase per term, which I believe is where we're at, and that's why we're seeing a little bit of an increase. I'm aiming that, I don't know what we would get, so.
So our last agreement was for the five-year term as well?
I believe so, yeah. And so that's up now, and I see no reason not to continue with it under these, under these terms and that's agreement.
Any questions? So I'll make the motion to approve the lease agreement with American Tower LLC.
I'll second.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Number eleven, superintendent's report.
We've already talked about a few things, I just wanted to give some updates on the summer stuff. Summer school's underway. Mrs. Tucker said that the intercom system at the elementary is getting closer to getting depleted. And then they will move over here to this building. Our summer crew has already been working on our hallways, getting those done. We'll be putting carpet in two north classrooms this year. We received some Red Bull fund money in our building fund, and that is based on a formula. We haven't got that before, but our evaluation has gotten low enough that we got a little bit of that money. So we got approximately eighty-six, all right, eighty-six hundred? Eighty-six hundred dollars, and it's gonna cost eighty-nine hundred dollars to carpet those two classrooms. So we're gonna use that someday to secure that project. There's a couple classrooms at the elementary that we would like to put carpet in those as well, so that's probably gonna be next summer's project. Last year, we did some things at the elementary and the library and put some new carpet down in there. So kind of trying to space out where we're doing some of those bigger projects. But other than that, we'll be doing some painting around the facilities and just trying to update a few things here and there. Possibly look at doing some signage and things at the complex, just kind of dressing that up a little bit. And then with the help of the city, we're hopeful we can get the drive-through drop-off area at the elementary looked at. I've also talked to the city manager and had him come up and kind of do some measurements and just take a look at our parking lot out here at the gym, just to see what options we might have, what he thinks, you know, and then maybe through a joint effort with county and the city. You know, maybe that's something that we could look at next year is maybe trying to fix that in some way. I don't know exactly what that might look like, but. I don't know exactly what that might look like, but that's why I've kind of reached out to them just to see what their thoughts are. They do a lot of, have to fix a lot of things like that around town. So I wanted to start with them, see what they could do. As I mentioned, you know, financially, I think we're, we're in good shape. We're kind of right, right where I thought we would be. And trying to just control the things that we can control and then deal with those things as they come that we can. You know, everything's getting more expensive. We're purchasing new math textbooks. And, you know, that's, that's a pretty big expense when you look at elementary and high school and junior high all together. That's, that's about $58,000 total to do that. But they haven't been updated in.
I know our algebra books are from 2003, so.
So it's time. Those things need to happen. So like I said, we're just, you know, trying to get those things done. I know we're gonna have to cut back on some programs and things next year, but we're also getting some good things in place. The elementary, getting that technology grant, updating some of those needed things. We got to check for that already today. So we put orders in for that equipment and the trainings on those things. We'll start with the teachers, you know, before school starts. And just trying to keep plugging along and doing what we can do. So as of right now, I think everything's going well. Looks like the fiscal year is gonna finish well, and we'll be ready to start the new one. One other thing, I don't know if I mentioned it last time. Fourth of July, we'll be at the sports complex this year, the fireworks. I attended a meeting with Main Street. We went over several things there. And we're happy to help out, let them use the facility. You know, we have a few stipulations there. We won't have any chairs out on the field, but if people want to go out there with blankets and sit and watch, more than welcome to do that. We'll have the turtle races up there at, I'm not sure exactly what location, but somewhere around that area. So that's kind of a traditional thing. And like I said, we're happy to help them out. Offered to allow them to use the golf carts, get people around. I know that that's a, that's something that we do, that not a lot of places do, and it's very much appreciated. And I know we've got a lot of people that really, really need that extra, extra help. There's not a lot of parks real close, especially when it's crowded for events like that. So excited to get to show off our facilities, you know, for that. And our guys will have it looking good when the time comes.
Sounds good. Any new business?
There's no new business.
So motion to vote to adjourn?
Second.
Poe?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.